Good evening. The Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board is officially called to order. My name is Roberta Mayor. I represent Sub District 10. And I'm going to have the other board members introduce themselves, starting from my far right. Chelsea.
Good evening, everybody. Chels Chee, Chelsea Chee from At Large.
Good evening, Elijah Lee, Sub District 5.
Greg Knutson, At Large.
This is Judy Ann Smith Kauhane. She's our Neighborhood Board Assistant, and she takes notes during the meeting.
Aloha Byron, I'm Post Sub District 8.
Silvercutt, District what?
Paige Altin, Sub District 11, Portlock Road and Honolulu Kokokai Triangle.
We have a number of board members who are online. Could you please introduce yourselves?
Good evening, everybody. Herb Schreiner, Sub District 6.
Hi, Sam Tanigawa, At Large.
Kim? Kim Hollinsworth is also online, and I expect to have one more member join us as the meeting continues. So we're going to be starting with our status reports. And Honolulu Fire Department and Honolulu Police Department, are they online? Honolulu Fire Department, are you online? Not yet, they may be joining us later. Honolulu Police Department? Not yet. So we're going to Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda. Thank you, Iris, for joining us.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Is this loud enough? Going to come a full circle. Okay. So I just want to do a main break report. I had four main breaks in August. August 2nd at near 7091 Camilo Street. On August 9th, near 959 Kai Liu, Kai Liu place. And on August 23rd, near 1033 Honolulu Home Road. And on August 28th, near 7146 Makaha Street. So, and then I also just do a general water announcement. So even though this is a month earlier, since this is the end of September, you're invited to the Board of Water Supply and its partner for this year's Imagine a Day Without Water event. So this is going to be a freshwater state recreation area in Waikiki. I looked it up, that's at 380 Walker Avenue. It's on Saturday, October 21st. And it's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So the event is going to have more than 15 state, city, and community organizations and organization booths, excuse me, with interactive activities. So you can learn more about the importance of One Water and the impacts of climate change today and in the future. So join us for rain barrel and native seed workshops, zero-scape plant craft activity, purchasing an annual freshwater fishing license so you can partake in the onsite fishing class, and you can make ginkgo balls. It's a bio remediation that removes pollutants from soil and water. So and plus, you can eat some ono food, play some games, and win some small prizes. So if anything, go to portofwatersupply.com, and this one is slash One Water Hawaii to get more information. So portofwatersupply.com/OneWaterHawaii. If you want more information, if there's any questions.
Any questions for the Board of Water Supply? No questions, Iris. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. All right, we're going to be moving on to the Kaiser Complex schools. And welcome Mr. Gu, Principal of Hahaione School.
All right, good evening. I'm Kathy Gu, Principal of Hahaione Elementary School, representing all Kaiser Complex schools. Just passing out some of the notes that we'd like to update you with. You know, over the past month and a half, all attention has turned to our sister schools in Lahaina. And we just want to support them any way possible. As you know, our schools and our students focus on compassion, especially community compassion. And once this happened, everybody wanted to help support. And so we have been raising donations, donating money, collecting new books to donate to the schools up there. So our niche or our part of this, we felt was to help student to student, staff, school staff to school staff. And so that's why we really, our heart goes out to them especially. We tried to see where we could support. So we had the good fortune of connecting with the principals of the four schools impacted just this morning virtually. And so it was Principal Everett in Kamamea III Elementary School, Principal Kanamori from Princess Nahiana Anna Elementary School, Principal Bookland from Lahaina Intermediate, and then Principal Caroso from Lahaina Luna High School. They all had very wise words of what they learned through this time of crisis. And I just wanted to point out some of the things that helped us to get a deeper sense of empathy and know how to help support them. So Principal Everett just said, "In difficult times, we grow the most as humans, staff, and leaders." That was very impactful. Principal Kanamori said, you know, "He never felt alone through the process." So I'm happy to report that many levels of our state DOE and district DOE systems just supported them in every way possible, from personnel all the way through the superintendent's office. Principal Bookland also mentioned that in times of crisis, you know, principals usually run towards their school to protect it. And that's exactly what she did. She watched the devastation from her office at Lahaina Luna, at Lahaina Intermediate. And so everyone started calling and making sure she was safe. And she's just appreciated all of the support. And then Principal Caroso just said, you know, "A lot of don't know answers up until this point." But he said, "It was through relationships and the trust that was built that they could traverse this uncertain time." And so through that, our principals connected with them. And now we would like to support them. And so we've been sending over donations. You can see some of the donations sent by Inahaina Elementary School and Hahaione. In fact, all schools have contributed in some way, either funds or material. Next, I'd like to turn to a happier note. This week is homecoming week or spirit week at Kaiser High School. And so all of our schools just step up to support them and their activities. Homecoming football game is going to happen on Friday at 7:00 p.m. So come out and check it out. I'm a proud alum of Kaiser High School. Go Cougars! And I'd like to support them. So they have dress-up days every day this week. They have a homecoming assembly tomorrow. And they're bringing back a lot of the traditions. But they also want to honor the victims of the Lahaina tragedy throughout their ceremonies. All right. And then, yeah, so they have a tribute towards Lahaina, Lahaina Luna High School in particular. Okay. And then all proceeds from the homecoming activities will be donated to the Maui Aloha United Way. All right. And then, yep, the homecoming game is against Kamaki High School, the Bulldogs. And so get your tickets, e-tickets online. All right. One other note to present is that both New Valley Middle School and Kaiser High School, they share an IB program called the Middle Years Program. And every five years, they get reauthorized or seek reauthorization. And so they just had a visit by two evaluators, one from Mexico City, another one from Sao Paulo, Brazil. And we're still waiting on the official report. But their verbal report said that both New Valley and Kaiser are implementing the Middle Years Program with fidelity and integrity. What that means is that they will retain their status as international baccalaureate world schools. And they are authorized to continue to offer the IB Middle Years Program. So congratulations to both New Valley and Kaiser High School. And then all schools in our IB program, they like to engage in global connections. In fact, that's part of the reason why I missed last month's Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board meeting. I was on a school trip to Japan. We visited Hiroshima, and we took a team of students and staff members along with four other schools. And we visited the Peace Memorial Park. And so we tried to link Hawaii and also the city of Hiroshima and in far as peace efforts and connect sister school partnerships. That's all I have to share. Thank you so much for allowing me to share at this time.
Questions for Mr. Gu? Paige?
Thank you so much for your report. I know that you are taking, the schools are taking new book donations. Are they also taking used book donations? And if so, where can we start donating used books as a community and get them together to get to Maui?
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. And so that was just our school, Hahaione's push for donations. We just said new books, just because we wanted them to have something really nice. We are also taking used book donations. I'm not quite sure if schools can use it. Right now, many of the schools are at different host locations. So they can't collect too many things. So like the Kihei area and, you know, places, they've been very gracious about hosting the students. But now that there's a timeline, so great news today. The superintendent released the timeline of reopening schools at a press conference at 10 o'clock this morning. And so right after the fall intercession, they'll be opening up schools. And I think that's when we're going to know, you know, how much, how many, how much material they'll be able to accommodate for donations. But bring it our way, and we'll find a way to get there. We have connections.
Would you keep us updated on when that would be? And then maybe also if they themselves come out, if they themselves, the schools, come out with the list of what they need as far as donations, if it's pencils or paper or whatever, maybe you could sort of coach them into getting that list together? And then maybe community, letting us know that? That'd be great.
Yeah, definitely. I'll give you an update next month.
Chelsea?
Thank you, Mr. Gu. I've been honored to be designated as Education Committee Lead for this. And would it be possible for me to be on some sort of a multi, all the principals and potentially PTA leaders? Just so that when I can, I can attend to have a better understanding of what the schools are grappling with and what the parents are grappling with.
Yeah, definitely. Please, please, please come and join us. And we are, we feel like we're the hub of our community. And we'd like to invite as many stakeholders as possible to our meetings.
I told Chelsea that the principals would be glad to have him join and attend the PTA meetings of their schools. So I'm glad to have you reinforce that. Member Hollinsworth, you have a question?
Yes, hi. Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties tonight. But I wanted to ask about the New Valley issue that is all over next door, all over the neighborhoods. I've been contacted by a couple constituents in the area asking what was resolved with that, how it was handled, and how you're going to handle things like that further out.
Yeah, thank you so much for asking that question and allowing us a chance to clarify. I believe Principal An and her leadership team at New Valley handled it pretty quickly and appropriately, and sent out letters same day to all of the parents who have kids that attend that school. I happen to be a parent of a New Valley student. My daughter is in the eighth grade. And I was very satisfied with the response and support provided. And so in the letter, it did state, you know, all of the measures they've taken. And they assured parents immediately through their emergency messaging system within hours of the occurrence or the report that everything was safe and verified by HPD.
Greg?
Can you recap what the situation was?
Yeah, I think some of the investigation is confidential. But I do know that there may have been a threat in social media that was not substantiated. But HPD looked into it immediately that morning and declared that it was safe.
Mr. Gu, I also wanted to let the community know so that they're not surprised that Kaiser High School, as part of its homecoming activities, is going to be initiating a flaming K for Kaiser on the parking lot on homecoming night, I think, or just before the game. So we don't do bonfires here. But they are going to be initiating a flaming K. So I'm eager to see what that's going to look like.
Yeah, that was a tradition from way back that they're trying to bring back into the homecoming traditions of today. But they also have worked with HFD to come and make sure that their protocol is safe. And so they have been there, practice to be safe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I didn't know it were. Be. An old tradition, I take it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Kaiser Complex schools? Anything from the audience? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gu, for joining us tonight.
Okay.
We're always happy to be here.
Mahalo to the board. Thank you.
Okay. If the Honolulu Police Department joins us online or the Honolulu Fire Department, please let us know, and we'll make sure that you have time to provide a report. I'm going to be moving on to, on our agenda. And next on our agenda is an announcement about our vacancies. We do have three vacancies on our board. We are a 15-member board. We have 12 of our seats filled. But we have a vacancy in Sub District 2, which is Arena Central. And that is the area between Hawaii Kai Drive and the Marina. So if there's anybody who lives in that area that would like to join us on the board, we'd love to have you. We also have a vacancy in Sub District 3. Sub District 3 is the Hahaione Valley that is very close to this school. And the valley goes quite deep up the mountain. And then we also have a vacancy in Sub District 9, which is Luna Lillo Park Makai. And that is the area around Kaiser High School, Luna Lillo Home Road to where the District Park is, Kokohed District Park is. So anybody out there that would like to join us? Oh, well, come on up. Tell us what sub-district you think you live in, and we'll verify that. Introduce yourself, please.
Well, good evening. Stacy Martin. So let's see if I qualify. I live in Kalele Kai. So we're on Ke'ole Lake, on the Marina.
Well, Judy Ann is checking your address. And could you give her your direct address?
One Ke'ole place.
Oh, okay. One Ke'ole place. And could you tell us a little bit about who you are and why you would like to join us?
Yes, I am. I've been attending, and I didn't plan on coming up. And every time I've been at a meeting, I've been hoping someone would step up and volunteer because I absolutely love our community. I believe in our community. And I also am passionate about the value of the Neighborhood Board. So tonight, of course, I came and nobody stepped up. So I promised I would. I have lived in Hawaii 30 years. I'm a mom, 22-year-old son, 16-year-old daughter. My board member experience, I was in tourism. So there was an international travel club. I was in the board there. I was in the board for our condo. And I also have condo board certification with the Community Institute Association. But more than that about me, I love, love people. I feel kindness can heal the world. I love collaboration. So I love, you just jumped in with that spirit of collaboration earlier, which I loved. And I'm just here to practice what I believe in, to step up and be involved with sincerity and care and. It's the Marina, dude.
As you're going up from Costco and Safeway, I mean, are you on the right-hand side or the left-hand side?
Right. We're on the Marina.
Okay, but it might be a different district.
Oh, Moenakai is our neighbor.
It's Stacy, right? Stacy, could you leave me your contact information? We're going to have the Neighborhood Commission Office investigate that address. And I'll contact you if you're eligible and have you sit at our next meeting. Is that all right?
The only condition is they can't be ducked.
Oh, okay.
But every other.
All right, great. But I'll be in touch. But give me your contact information, and I'll contact you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that you're willing to join us. And I do hope that you're in the right sub-district. I'll let you know. Yes, Chelsea?
I think it's my understanding that some of the Neighborhood Boards are staffed with, filled with a, all the board members being at large. Is there, is there, should there be a discussion of whether or not this board ought to be at-large? So that, that we determine the right number of at-large board members to conduct business? Because otherwise, we will continue to have vacancies. And those vacancies seem to probably degrade the board's, I mean, perception of board being not as representative. But I think that if we have at-large board members, then we, we actually are interested in advancing the neighborhood as Hawaii Kai as opposed to sub-districts, so.
Well, Chelsea, we have had this discussion before. And we do have some sub-districts that have remained empty for long periods of time. And so we have asked the Neighborhood Commission Office, their board, to consider allowing us to change some of our sub-district seats to at-large seats. But I wanted to wait a few months to see if we could, because this is the beginning of the term. And I wanted to see if we could get some volunteers from the sub-districts. But certainly, we'll revisit this if our seats go empty for a longer period of time. But it's, it may be possible to change more of the seats to at-large.
Yeah. Is there any downside to having the entire board at-large board members? And I'm asking because I don't, I don't know.
Greg?
There's no guarantee of distribution of representation with that. If it was all at-large, they could all come from one area or just a couple of areas. We could fill the board, but we, you know, we would still have those pockets. Right now, we're facing vacancies from some regions that are not being fully represented. And at-large would not likely attract someone from those areas that we can't attract now. So they'd remain more permanently unrepresented. So I think it's good that we have a handful of at-large plus assurances if they're filled that each district is represented.
Makes sense to me. Thanks, Greg.
Any other comments on this issue? But we can revisit it in the future. And in the meantime, we urge all of you who are watching online or in the audience to join us if you're so inclined. We'd be happy to have you. Okay, community announcements. Are there members of the board or members of our audience that would like to share any community announcements with this community? Please come on up.
Hi, aloha. Thank you, Chair of Mayor. I'm Carol Jackson with Huinaluupu New Club. And I just wanted to announce the Ka'eevi Coast Run is going to be November 19th this year. I haven't been here for a couple of months to announce it. It's always the Sunday before Thanksgiving, so November 19th. We'd love to have you all there to participate. It's a four-mile walk run from Sandy Beach Park around the Ka'eevi Scenic Byway and ending at the Huinaluupu La'au. But I also wanted to just give a quick traffic advisory. We're usually cleaned up and the road is open between 8:00 and 8:30. But if you're an early riser on that particular Sunday, the road is closed completely from Sandy Beach Park to Hanama Bay. Hanama Bay is open. And just access to the Portlock Kokokai Triangle area is a little bit, little bit tougher that morning. But it's all cleared up by about 8:00 a.m., 8:30 a.m.
Any questions on the Ka'eevi Coast Run? All right. No questions, Carol. Thank you very much for coming to share that with us. Any other community announcements? All right. Are there any public-generated issues that the public would like to bring to our attention? All right, I have a couple that has come to me. First of all, I would like to acknowledge that Kamamea Schools responded to the community's concern about the overgrowth in the parcel of land across from the Hawaii Kai Post Office. And I would like to acknowledge that they did cut down that overgrowth. Our community members were concerned about the possibility of wildfires in the, in the area. So I really want to acknowledge that they were very responsive. So thank you very much. The other thing that I would like to bring to the board's attention is I got an email from the Hawaii Kai Town Center Manager. And he is very concerned about the increase in the homeless population at Honolulu Beach Park. This has come up as a discussion item before. And I want to get a sense from the board if they would like me to bring this back as an agenda item to discuss again. Evidently, there is an issue that people are camping overnight at the beach park and are there all the time. They're not fishing. They might put a pole in the water to say that they're fishing. But they actually are homeless people who are occupying the park because they have no place else to go. There are a lot of other issues involved in this because if we close the park at night, let's say from 10:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, where will these people go? Will they go under the bridges or into other areas? This is a problem that might need, you know, a multi-pronged approach. But if you would like me to bring it back as an agenda item for further discussion, I would be happy to do so. And I get a sense from the board as to what you would like to do. Greg?
Well, I would oppose it because it seems the only real direction it would go would be toward park closure. And I just don't like to practice park closures. I know many of them in our area have been closed now at night. But I, I think it should remain open. And that's no way to deal with the homeless situation because it does just chase them elsewhere. The photos that were attached to what you distributed were Jolu Kella Park. Wasn't Moanulu Bay, which also jurisdiction is a little different too. That would be state park. But it was in a city park. And another photo was just kind of over by the bridge, which is just sort of like a public beach, which is under state deal in our jurisdiction. But that one doesn't seem to be as prevalent. But the ongoing thing that we usually bring up when the police are here. So I still feel it's predominantly a police matter. And they occasionally say they do move them from, well, either Jolu Kella or across the little inlet around the restroom. That is, you know, that's an area as well. But the police just need to do, I think, a more thorough job of. But the police just need to do, I think, a more thorough job of enforcing that, if they are in fact doing things illegally. The whole premise of the Hawaii Kai Town Center was that they're associating it with burglaries and, you know, crime in their area. And I think that's basically, they should increase their security as well. But to close the parks for all public use, I think, is overkill.
Paige?
I agree with Greg. I think that the issue is not whether we, in a sense, punish all of the people who actually use Mauna Lua Bay and Jolu'kela Beach Park for fishing or they leave and they go out fishing at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, some of these fishermen, and they come in late at night sometimes. And to punish them in essence because we're closing the park because of the homeless doesn't fix the homeless issue. I think the issue needs to be dealing with the homeless situation. And when you deal with the homeless situation, then you'll be dealing with the park situation. But to go to the extreme of closing that park and then, you know, punishing everybody who does use that park and both of those parks, Jolu'kela and Mauna Lua Bay, for the good that they do, I don't think that's right. And then, you know, you also have all of the emergency vehicles and everybody else that use Mauna Lua Bay at all times of the day and night. Are you gonna say that it's okay for them, but it's not okay for fishermen to go out there?
Okay, before I call on you, Elsie, I just wanted to say that the police officers have told us that they cannot enforce anything at the park because there is no restriction. And so, they can't do anything, which is why they have asked us before to consider park closure hours. So, Elsie, comment?
I just wanted to say that it does affect the public because if there's quite a settlement there, and I think it impedes people with children going to that park and using it and even just walking for recreation. It's, it's, it's a bit, you know, there's some, well, I feel hesitant sometimes to go along the beach there because it's a very, it's a homesteading situation, really. And I think that's something to consider. I'm not sure if you have a park closure, if it then closes the parking lot necessarily in the boat ride. I mean, wouldn't that be a different thing to address? I don't know.
Member Schreiner, online?
Hello. I disagree with Greg and Paige. When we discussed this issue not too long ago, there were two people there. And then you guys said, nope, you don't want to do anything. There's like about 15 now. And it's gonna go to 30, it's gonna go to 40, because they're pushing them out of town, and we're gonna get them all. So that, and I talked to the police officers, and they will not do anything without a closure. It's a, and, and also, the fisherman thing, I think our council chair's office is gonna bring this up. But anyway, it's gonna get worse. It's gonna look like all a park used to look like or all kinds of places. But you guys wanna welcome into the community, go ahead. And those police officers tell me that we're getting other things happening around the shoplifting and the, and those issues. And because it's on the private property, you know, does it make it their problem only? But we need to make sure that we secure our area. And not only that, every single park from Wai'li to Mauna Lua is closed at night. That's it.
Okay, we have a hand up. Is that you, Amanda, that would like to speak?
Yes, hello.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few comments on this issue. Our office has also been receiving complaints lately, and, and, you know, it's not uncommon for this area. As we know, because there is no park closure, we continue to request enforcement and outreach services through our City Riser Process System with the Managing Director's Office. But we hear the same thing from HPD, that there's just really nothing that can be done without park closure. As we know, homelessness is not a crime, and so they actually have to be conducting illegal activity. Otherwise, anybody can be in the park at any time. And then to the point about fishing, fishing is a protected activity, so that's one thing we don't have to worry about. But at the same time, it again creates this difficulty where there isn't park closure hours, and folks are camping in the park and are using the excuse that they're fishing, and they do have poles in the water. Whether or not they're actually fishing, I think, is debatable. But because they say they're fishing and they have poles in the water, and it is a protected use, there's nothing that the police department can do about it. So we will continue to see this problem at this particular park because we don't have park closure. And that's it.
Chelsea?
You know, I go out there for stand-up before sunrise, and I see a whole bunch of folks out there. And then, and you can tell who are really fishing. There are some kavunas out there that I know fish. But there's other ones that are essentially camping and living there. Is there a way that you can close the park but still have use of it? Like, for example, launching, surfing, and paddleboarding? That would solve both problems, right?
So if I may just add to that.
All right, Amanda, go ahead.
Though access to the water is never an issue. It's always open. Like fishing, it's a protected activity. The beach can never be closed. The water can never be closed. It's the park that would be closed. So people would still be allowed to traverse the park to get to the water if there are activities they want to be doing in the water. But they can't be staying in the park. Basically, that's how it works.
Thanks for that clarification, Amanda. Paige, and then Elizabeth?
Well, I guess I'm confused because you said that fishing is a protected activity, and if people are going out there and they're fishing, then they can't be kicked out of the park, even though the park is closed. But if people have a fishing pole up, you're gonna leave it up to the police to decide if they're really fishing or if they're just living there. I'm, I'm confused. Like, you're splitting hairs on this. I think that this is a longer conversation. I'd like this to be put on the agenda for next month so that we can really discuss this.
All right, and that is the issue that I'm posing to the board. Is this something that you would like me to bring back as an agenda item so that we can discuss it and perhaps come up with maybe some recommended solutions? Elizabeth?
I agree. I think it should be on the agenda, but I would like everybody to think about between now and then, where do we think they're gonna go? Are they gonna go underneath the bridges? Are they gonna go onto state land? Are they gonna go into communities on lands that have overgrown trees and shrubs? So we have to consider that just as well. And then, they'll still be there during the day. And the issue at the shopping center, I think, is still gonna continue. I do understand about closing. If we do, when we have that conversation, I'll still advocate that if we close the park, it's on a pilot program basis for two years, just to observe and see if it really makes a difference. Thank you.
All right. Kim Hollinsworth, you have a comment?
The bathrooms alone be locked, because I feel like that's why they're congregating near the bathrooms. And I've been there, and I haven't been able to use the bathroom because actually someone was showering in the sink. Can those bathrooms be locked at like dusk to dawn or, no? Okay.
I think that those are some of the questions that perhaps we'll receive answers on next month when we bring it back for further discussion. Okay? So I will bring it, I'll put it on the agenda for our October meeting. Okay, any other public-generated issues? Yes, Elizabeth?
I didn't get to make a, apologize for my tardiness, to make a, any announcement, so may I at this moment? Thank you, thank you. So just want to remind everybody that October 14th, Hava'i Heau and Kiabava Wetland will be open to the general public to learn about the wetland and the birds and the heau. But something different in addition, in October, October 28th, we're looking for volunteers to Malama'iaina Mauka Ka'eevi. So for those who may not know, we open up those lands for hiking. And in order to do that, it's kind of good to go check out the trails and get them cleared. So the first opportunity to help us is October 28th on a Saturday. I'm not gonna share details exactly where the trails are. I'm just gonna encourage you to connect with us at directors@hawaiikaihui.org. And again, we're looking for those that are interested in clearing trails, learning about the land, and then also hiking. Thank you.
Hey, before we go on to presentations, I'm going to ask Stacy Martin to come back up. I believe your address is in Sub District 2. And so, we would like our neighborhood assistant to administer the oath of office to you. Okay, Stacy, we're gonna have our neighborhood assistant administer the oath of office to you, and will that'll happen? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You're, you're absolutely right. I'm, I apologize. Okay. Board members, any further questions for our volunteer candidate? Yes, Paige?
Hi, Stacy. Thank you for volunteering. It's a thankless job. But what is your, what are your thoughts going into neighborhood board? What are you looking to accomplish, or what are you looking to, why do you want to be a part of neighborhood board?
Before I moved to Hawaii Kai, I lived in Kahuku on the North Shore. I love the sense of community. I loved how everybody was involved, not only in what was going on. Businesses wanted to come into the North Shore, zoning, they, they were strong. And it, it's because they had relationships, and they intentionally wanted to step up in their community. So when I had to leave the North Shore, Kahuku, and I moved to Hawaii Kai, I immediately appreciated the sense of community. And then coming to the neighborhood board over my years, I grew an appreciation for when you have a strong neighborhood board. But then when I would come, I didn't see many attendees. A fire in me that I wanted to step up and be here. And I start, I started advocating to my neighbors, Hawaii Kai Board, and just any way to be involved. We need to create more relationships amongst one another, be educated about what's, what our issues are. What, and, and again, to be engaged as a community. Even when I, I go out, if you see me in Safeway every day, I love to get to know another name of someone. I love to listen. I love to hear other perspectives. And I just have a heart to serve and to, and hopefully help be an influence in our community to bring more engagement through relationship, through pride of living here, but also understanding we can make a difference. Sorry, sorry if that was a little long. Thank you for the question, Paige. I hope you might answer, but please.
There's another question here, Stacy. I apologize. But it's One Ke'ohole Place, right? Not Ke'ohole Street. So if it's Ke'ohole Place, it is in Sub District 10, not in Sub District 2. So unfortunately, if you lived across the street, then you'd be eligible.
Find a neighbor across the street.
Yes, I think so. But eventually, if no one fills that seat and it somehow, someday becomes an at-large seat, we hope that you'll consider applying again.
In the meantime, thank you for all you do. I appreciate it.
Oh.
That it's not thankless, but we do thank you.
Yes, Elizabeth?
Chair Mayor, I was wondering, do you think before the end of the year we might approach the commission office about converting some of our open seats to at-large?
I think early next year, we'll look at that. We only have one, two more meetings before the end of this year.
I know. I just figured that they're probably gonna own it for a few months before we get a result. Figured if we give it to them in 2023, it starts in 2024.
All right. Maybe we'll do that at our November meeting. Okay. Okay. Darn, I, I wish we could have offered you a seat tonight, Stacy. Okay, we're gonna be moving on to presentations, and the only present is not a formal presentation, but we do need to take a look at discussing this. Last, at the end of last meeting, I did write the letter to the Board of Land and Natural Resources about removing the Ka'eevi Coast shoreline from the solicitation that they were doing for food trucks along that coastline. We think that that area needs to remain in its wild and natural state. Now, in addition to that, there is a possibility that there might be a name change to this whole area. And it goes back to the bill that was signed into law. Started out as Senate Bill Number 1254, signed into law, so that it is now Act, I believe, 235. And this act refers to the Ka'eevi Coast and refers to it as the Ka'eevi State Park. Or Ka'eevi Coast State Park throughout this bill. It calls it Ka'eevi Coast State Park. And this may, there's a possibility that it will engage a name change to this area. And this is what Elizabeth first brought to our attention at last month's meeting. We did not discuss it because it was a separate issue from the solicitation for food trucks. So I brought it back to this month so that we could think about whether or not we might want to take a position not to change the name to Ka'eevi Coast State Park and leave it Ka'eevi Coast Scenic Shoreline. So any comments to this? Elizabeth, I'm gonna have you start first.
Thank you. And board members, I certainly hope you would seriously consider entertaining having Chair Mayor send a letter to the DLNR, just letting it be known that we would like to keep it as a state scenic shoreline. I do want to share with you this document. Quite big. It's called Ka'eevi State Park. It is a Ka'eevi State Park. It is already. And I don't want to get into the details of past actions. I am appreciative of the work that was done. And there are in that bill some great protection measures. But it is already a state park, and it is a scenic shoreline park. And it was done that way purposely. I have a letter from Wilson Okamoto from 1995, when it was originally thought of to be a state scenic shoreline park. Because it conveys the topography, the purpose and intent of what that area is supposed to be and is. If we look at the latest news of the turtles that are now coming back and nesting. If we look at the latest news of the turtles that are now coming back and nesting, this is a shoreline, not a state park. So when you think of a state park and you think of a scenic shoreline, two different things are conjured up in your mind. And I think it's really important to stay true to the mission of keeping it in its wild and natural state. We just kind of be proactive and reattest that we love the name, Scenic Shoreline, and we advocate for keeping it that way. I did try, prior to tonight's meeting, to get clarity on when the bill will go before the land board. And it does have to go that way for some sort of conversation. And we're not quite sure what that conversation is going to be. So I would hope that the letter can be conveyed to the DLNR. And at the same time, it would allow us the opportunity, when it comes up, within a certain period of time, one or two of us can show up to represent the larger community sentiment to keep it as a state scenic shoreline. Now, I can tell you in my past conversations with Senator Lee, we never once talked about changing the name. It's never come up in five years that he has spoken about his interest in Ka'ivi and working on this measure. So we just are being as proactive as we can in looking at the possibilities of what might come up. I also know that signage across the board would have to change if a name change occurred. And it just really makes no sense. It's just not necessary. So that's my short intro to this issue. And if anyone wants to take a look at this Ka'ivi State Park master plan, you're more than welcome to, or this very cool letter from 1995, you're more than welcome to. Thank you.
All right, I'm entertaining other comments. Paige?
Well, it's not so much a comment, it's two questions. So it is... Okay, I know that they're calling it Ka'ivi Coast State Park, but the Ka'ivi Coast Scenic Shoreline is the shoreline. Is that correct? And then is it still the Ka'ivi Coast Scenic Byway, which is the road? I mean, can you make a clarification there? I'm a little confused.
At the state level, the type of park it is is a state scenic shoreline.
Okay.
Separate from that, there was an initiative started here at this board level to create the Manalua Makapuu Scenic Byway. And that was through the state DOT. And that's a separate initiative. It's not that it's called that. It's just designated it at the state level.
Okay.
For certain reasons.
Okay. So but that area between Manalua Bay and then basically Makai Pier is the Ka'ivi Coast Scenic Shoreline?
No. Greg?
Greg, some clarity?
Well, that is the length of the scenic byway. But the shoreline is actually the 300-some acres that are there. Ironically, it doesn't include the one point where the governor made this announcement on July 6th. That's actually Hawaiian Homelands, operating under the control of either the state or city. I don't even know which one on that, but it has a city park. But the area designated as the Ka'ivi State Scenic Shoreline includes all the lowland area in there as well.
In where?
Anything Makai of the highway, from the Allen Davis Wall to Makapuu Point, the lookout over Makapuu Beach.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, is what I want to look at, because this was my first question in my head on the July 6th induction of the state park, was what are the advantages and disadvantages to the Aina when it comes to being designated as a state park? And that's primarily where I'm going to come from, is what are the advantages and disadvantages to the land?
Elizabeth, go ahead.
So it is already a state park. So it's not a matter of changing that designation. It's a matter of just maintaining the name as a state scenic shoreline. And if you want my personal opinion, why do I want it not to be called Ka'ivi State Park? My personal opinion is when you conjure up in your mind about what a state park is about, it's about recreation and serving the people and the users. Ka'ivi Coast is Malka to Makai, being kept in its wild and natural state. We have turtles coming back, the monk seals there, the yellow-faced bee. We've got fabulous groups doing restoration work, sand dune protection, and there's recreation. But it's not the starting point of how you care for that land. It starts first with what is essential to maintain the land and the wild habitat. Two completely different orientations. This is my personal opinion.
And that's what I was getting at, because that was my first question to Senator Lee at that induction of the state park thing, was does this now allow the state to treat this area like it treats every other state park? Like Diamond Head and the other state parks that they have? Are they going to start charging for it? I mean, those are the kinds of things that went through my head, because those have been my fears for that area for many, many, many years. So again, that was my fear, was them saying, oh, now it's a state park. Now we can, in order to maintain it, we have to do a gift shop and we have to do paid-for parking. And that's what scares me. So yeah, I'm on that page. Thank you.
And in my conversations with Senator Lee, I have to say that he has embraced and he has articulated many times that he recognizes the need to keep it in its wild and natural state. The idea of a possible name change, again, never came up in conversation with him. And I don't even, I'm sorry that he's not here, and I'll certainly reach out with him, reach out to him tomorrow now.
Oh, if you guys can hear me.
Oh, Cheepers, hi, Senator Lee.
Senator Lee, would you like to chime in on this?
Sure, I can provide a little bit of maybe info. First of all, thanks for having the conversation. And sorry, I've been lurking here in the background, but it's been a good convo so far. Paige, to your point, yeah, we did speak at the event, what was it, last month or the month before? The designation doesn't allow additional authority for DLNR to bring in whatever commercial activities or that sort of thing. As I had mentioned, and I think I got the receipt of the board letter from last month as well on the food vendor thing. So we've got a conversation coming up here with the powers that be at DLNR to follow up on that, and we can report back. But in any event, so there shouldn't be any additional that kind of thing. What the law does is, under the designation, it does provide protections on the other end. So it puts into law that the whole place shall be managed in its wild and natural state and preserved in perpetuity, et cetera, et cetera. But that's important because ultimately, the place is managed, I think as Elizabeth I mentioned, by the state largely, except for the part that Greg was talking about over by the cliffs and whatnot, which is a totally separate thing. But it's managed sort of at the whim of who the leaders in the departments are. And as we know, every two, four years, depending, those leaders can shift out. And so what we're trying to avoid is a situation where all of a sudden there is somebody who wants to do something big with it or go open it up for whatever purposes that might not be appropriate. The designation prevents that from happening. And so that's the legal check on that kind of thing that you're talking about right now. That was the whole intent of the whole thing.
Senator Lee, the reason that this has been brought to our attention is that there seems to be some confusion about whether or not DLNR needs to make a name change, which might include changing signs and everything else. So if that's not the case, then it's not a problem. But if it is the case, if there is some confusion, we thought that perhaps if we took a position to not have the name of the Ka'ivi Coast Scenic Shoreline changed, then it might add some weight to the discussion that's going on at the DLNR level.
Sure. And I think when we originally drafted what is now the law, I think through four or five iterations over the last four or five years that have been through the legislative process to various points, that was all based on one of the earlier, originally based on one of the earlier, I forget which report it was from, the community or Scenic Byway Project or whatever it was that came before, that had cited at one point that particular name. And I have to go dig through notes to go find where that came from. But anyways, one of those prior studies or reports, or maybe it's the one that Elizabeth has there, I'm not even sure. But the way the law is set up, and this was consistent through all the bills through all the years, the designation is tied to that name, which was sort of the, there wasn't an intent specifically with it, but basically you had to create some sort of separate designation in order to apply the separate kind of unprecedented legal protections that didn't exist before this. So there had to be a trigger for that, which is why we needed a specific designation of some sort. I'm not sure if that's helpful or that muddles things even more.
It muddles it a little bit more for me, because it seems to be, you seem to be saying that you need to change the name in order to establish a separate designation for these added protections.
Not exactly. There's... Well, yes, that's the way it got set up. So the law says, whatever in that area is designated as the Ka'ivi Coast State Park shall enjoy protections, ABC, down the list. So that's legally how it's set up. So yes, that's correct.
All right, Elizabeth has a further question and perhaps a challenge.
No, 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 no. Not at all, Senator. I'm going to ask Senator if you would support our Neighborhood Board sending a letter just to reaffirm the community's interest in keeping it named State Scenic Shoreline.
Yeah, so the only catch with that, I'm happy to go along with, you know, wherever the folks want to go. The catch is legally in the law, what's referenced is the change of designation. That's the trigger for all the protections. So if we don't change, or I guess if DLNR doesn't adopt that designation, then none of the stuff in the law will apply. None of the protections will apply, I guess, is the concern. So we'd have to come back next year with another bill to amend that. But happy to...
I'm, thank you. I'm confident in the path that we're about to take, which would be the Neighborhood Board with your support and Representative Ward's support and Stanley Chang's support to have State Scenic Shoreline name remain and share that with the DLNR and then represent that thought before the land board. And I'm pretty confident that we would do well. But that's if we all hooey together on this.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is...
Thank you.
I guess what I'm saying is, I appreciate, I'm happy to go where the community wants to go on the name. That was obviously never something that we were fixed on at any point. But what was passed, in order for the land board to put the legal protections in place on the land, they would need to, per the law, adopt the specific designation, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yes. And not a problem there. Not a problem. I actually have a fabulous document I'll share with you. It's sort of antique-ish, but it's fabulous. And it references it as a state park. I'll find you and I'll share this with you. But yeah, no problem, state park. But the type is State Scenic Shoreline. Thank you.
Greg, and then Chelsea?
Yeah, I'm a little confused by all that, too. And I do think back on the July 6th presentation, where was with even made, you know, comments in support of it with the governor there, with Senator Lee, with all folks who, very well-intended, were there and praising that. So I don't quite see how turning it around at this stage would make any sense.
There's nothing that's being turned around. All I'm saying is to keep the name, because there is a possibility of a name change. It's not a guarantee. It's a possibility.
The bill says very directly to be known as the Ka'ivi Coast State Park. And that might be different from this kind of Ka'ivi State Park stuff that was basically just sort of a master plan. So that's kind of irrelevant. Because what was established later when they did make the land purchase, they have, I don't know, there are a lot of provisions, including land of the Ka'ivi Coast State Park shall be preserved in perpetuity primarily in its wild and natural state. That's the most important part of that. Now, it currently is, yes, it is a state park, even if it's a scenic coastline by name, but it's within the State Park Division of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. It is a state park. But given that, they are free to start charging for parking, to possibly even have an admission charge on that. So it's, I don't see how a name change enters into any of that. It would not protect it. What we need is a fleshed-out definition of wild and natural state and be very specific about what it does or doesn't allow.
Oh, I had a conversation with DLNR about this. And I wouldn't ask the board to go on this path. And I wouldn't approach the elected officials to enjoin with us. I'm just sorry that I was remiss in not reaching out to the elected officials before tonight. And so again, being able to keep it as State Scenic Shoreline by name, not designation, calls out the uniqueness of this landscape. But I'll say nothing more. But I think Chelsea has something to add?
I was just listening to Senator Lee's explanation and why it's legally and legislatively significant as to a name change or lack of name change. So, but what I heard from him, though, is that there is a legislative process in which that you can build another category that would allow something like that. Because without it, name change is a lot of work without impact at the end, because you're not protected. And so I guess with that, my question is, is the board willing to take on the work of, what is that either? You wouldn't have to be, you shouldn't be a subcategory, because everyone's concerned about what the state could do if its designation is a state park. And so there ought to be certain things, the constraints and procedure and protections that are accorded to having some sort of a name change that's legally recognized by legislature. Is that, am I following that conversation correctly?
Just clarify that this isn't an issue about having it designated or not designated a state park. It is designated a state park. This is just simply about preserving the existing name through the next process when it goes before the land board and conveying our interest in doing so. That's all it is.
So in other words, you don't object if they fence the whole place and start charging for parking?
No, separately, as it started with Greg a few months ago, mentioning about, you know, being vigilant and mentioning, wow, I see this list, solicitation for food trucks, Ka'ivi, the board took a position. And so I actually kind of jumped on that bandwagon and started looking into Ka'ivi and looking at areas of potential vulnerability or misunderstanding. And this popped up. But make no mistake about it, I think this board and larger community would certainly rally around, as you're saying, maybe we need to look at this bill or look at what else comes into play to protect Ka'ivi moving forward. But that's separate from what's about to come up before the land board, which we should have representation there.
Paige?
It seems to me that this has all been very piecemealed for many, 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 many years. It was piecemealed to protect this. And then it was piecemealed to protect this. And then we had to change the name of this in order to protect this. I think we all have the same goal. I think we all really want this property, this land, to remain in its natural and wild state. I think that's all of our goals. So I guess my question is, is why is DLNR and this legislature or whoever it is that's behind this name change, why are they so intent on changing the name? That's my question. Because there's an advantage there. Either they don't care, which means we don't need to do a name change, or they care too much and there's a reason behind it. So I'd like to know what that is. But why can't we all, the elected officials, DLNR, the board, whoever, get together, just be like, look, this is the goal. How do we do that? Is it a name change? Is it not a name change? Is it a designation? Not a designation? You know, do we have to make a new law? Do we have to, you know, what is it that we have to do in order to save this land in perpetuity in its natural and wild state without having to worry about the city or the state or anybody coming? coming in and saying, let's put in parking meters in a gift shop? That's that's where I'm coming from. So I would just like to know how we can do that. And whether our elected officials are on board, I think they are for that. And how can how can we get there without having to address this every year, every other year, all of a sudden this comes up and now we have to deal with it? It's just, I mean, let's just save it and be done with it.
Paige, I think we're always going to. I think we're always going to have to be vigilant. But I'm going to have Elizabeth, she was wanted to respond to your question.
So.
That it was a question. It was just a comment.
Yeah, I do want to comment. I really don't believe that there's anything at the state level that's down the road looking to change the name because it triggers the opportunity for this, this and that. I don't believe that's the case right now with the leadership that we have. I believe that in the future, there's opportunity for interpretation to suit the needs in the future. That's what I'm worried about. And I think what we can work on now is with what Chelsea was saying and what you're recommending, I think is a great idea. One of the ways to rally around it is to take the state Ka'eevi Park master plan, start with a document like that and you look at it and maybe you look to get some funding against it to amend it. And that's where you get to have that great conversation and you can fold in what Senator Lee did. That's my thought. And I know our organization got a grant, we're probably getting another grant, and I'm more than happy to put some of that towards professional planning with through the neighborhood board. So definitely we can do that, I think, if state and county is interested in participating. So I think it's important. So again, it's just simply about expressing the will to keep it as a Ka'eevi State Scenic Shoreline because it truly conveys the uniqueness of that landscape and it provides us with an opportunity to go before the land board to listen in on that conversation. Because it has to go before the land board. The bill exists, and I don't know what the timeline is, but it has to go before them for some sort of processing. And in my conversation with DLNR, a possibility can be a name change. And if the community speaks up and asks and has a good argument, it could possibly just stay the same.
Greg.
Since we are going on about just the name itself and the agenda, it's not really correct. It should, the current name is the Ka'eevi, one word, State Scenic Shoreline. And the proposed name, as in the bill that passed, SB 1254, would be Ka'eevi Coast State Park. So anyway, just to clarify, if we do move forward, we should at least use the correct name that we're looking for. And so it'd be actually to keep it as Ka'eevi State Scenic Shoreline. And yes, that could be a land board decision. It doesn't matter what 1254 said.
Okay. After hearing all of that, I'm not sure. I think the board does want us to take some position about maintaining the name, although we still want the protections that the passage of the law has is providing to the shoreline. So I can certainly try to draft something and send it to all of you to take a look at. And before I send it out, how about that? Yes, Elizabeth?
If I get the timing of when this is going before the land board and it comes up before our next neighborhood board meeting, I would ask if perhaps you or I or another board member would have permission to represent and attend.
Attend the land board meeting you're talking about?
Right, if we don't have our letter to them by then.
Oh, okay. What I'll do is I'll draft a letter. I'll send it to all of you, ask for your input, redraft it, and then send it. And so that they at least know where we're, how we feel about this, the name. And certainly, is there any objection to having someone from the board attend the land board meeting if they're able to, able to do so? No, yes, Greg?
Well, I think given this kind of discussion and explanation would be fine, but this is not an official board position, since we have not considered it as such or taken any kind of vote. And I'm not real sure if we can, well, perhaps it would be approved that if.
Well, we can take a vote if.
But it also just seems like we could make it known to the land board that there is concern, instead of risking a vote and possibly not being an official position, and just explain that, yeah, this has created a little confusion and these are the reasons why.
That can work also. Okay. Do we want to take a vote to send a letter to the Board of Land and Natural Resources expressing our concerns about a possible name change and how we would like to maintain, if possible, the Ka'eevi Coast Scenic Shoreline in the state park designation? Ka'eevi State Scenic Shoreline. Okay. I'd like a motion. Chelsea?
May I suggest in that letter to add, I mean, that's the task to request, but the purpose in the long run is to be able to have some legislative action that that will further protect. So it's not all or nothing. Either it's a park or not. And then if it's not a park, then it's not protected. And so if you can add that language to the letter, it'd be great.
No, no, we want it to remain a state park. All we're concerned about is the loss of the name by which most of us identify this area.
Yes, but the designation of state park also comes with a price of state having to do something to the park that that we we don't necessarily have a have a voice in.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Chelsea is trying to express the board's sentiment and desire to let them know that the board does intend in the future to continue to work towards additional protective measures for the Ka'eevi lands. I think he just wanted to strengthen it by saying, in addition, the board does continue to plan on working on caring for and protective measures. Correct. Okay. I'm happy to make that motion. Thank you.
Paige, did you second? Okay, so a motion made by Elizabeth, seconded by Paige, that we send a letter to the Board of Land and Natural Resources expressing our concern about the possible name change to the new law, the new state park designation. Yep. Okay. All those in favor? Do we need a roll call vote? You can do a voice vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Online, I have three board members raising their hands and everyone here in a person is raising their hand. So unanimous. Okay, I will work on a draft and get that back out to the board members.
Thank you for your support, Senator Lee.
And Senator Lee, I'm going to also send you a copy of that so that you know what we're thinking. And I'd be happy to talk to you a little bit more about, explaining to me about why this designation is important to the protections. Okay?
Happy to follow.
Okay, thank you. We're going to be moving on to our officials' reports, starting with Mayor Rick Blongiardi's representative, Amy Osilby. Hi, Amy. Thank you for coming out to join us.
There, everyone. Good evening. I have a few updates. And so I'll go through those and ask for any other questions you might have. So first two are from the Department of Parks and Recreation. Number one is Baba Malu Beach Park. And this has kind of been following up about the signage there. And I sent all of the emails, photos and everything from Reese Liggett. I've sent it multiple times. And in the end, DPR reached out to HPD and they said that regarding any additional signage, that they were informed from HPD that they do not believe it is necessary at this time. And so they are not pursuing any additional signage. That's, that's what I'm told. So next with DPR is with regard to Cocoa Head Shooting Range. Again, you know, we've been trying to figure out when are they going to reopen some of the other shooting ranges, what's happening with the staffing, et cetera. And so today, the response is that DPR is still working on hiring two full-time positions. So there's the Recreation Assistant Two and Recreation Specialist One. They are opening, the opening on weekdays will be contingent on the hiring of at least one of these positions. DPR will be interviewing candidates for this position in the next week. And the Recreation Specialist One was posted internally. So DPR is waiting to see if there are any applicants, or DHR, to see if there are any applicants. If there are no applicants, then they take that solicitation public instead of just internal to the department. With regard to the reopening of the Metallic Silhouette, the Action Pistol Trap and Ski Ranges, those are contingent on the completion of the safety and environmental improvements as recommended by the expert consultant. So DPR continues to work closely with the HPD and DPS to reopen the Metallic and Action Pistol Ranges. DPR will be meeting with the Cocoa Head Ski Club and Cocoa Head Trap Club to go over their procedures so their operations remain in compliance with the environmental regulations and the DPR rules before they open those trap and ski range. They hope to open those two ranges by the end of this year. Okay. And there was a question about part-time openings at the city and county and why are they not listed on the regular jobs opening portal? And DHR responded that although there may not be civil service part-time jobs solicited at the moment, we do have part-time positions. And when they're needing to be solicited, they post them on the regular job notification site. But there are some departments that may have temporary part-time contract positions. And these can be located via, and then they gave me a link, which I can drop in the chat or I don't know, maybe share with you, Judy Ann, because it's kind of complicated. Looks like www.honolulu.gov apps backslash temp jobs. So I hope that's helpful. But not being able to just hand you the link, I know it's kind of difficult. Member Wolf asked about short-term rental waivers or is, are there any other things that we're doing for residents of Maui? So the response was that Governor Green and the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation set up the Hawaii Fire Relief Housing Program aimed at connecting Maui residents affected by the wildfires with property owners who wish to provide them rooms, dwellings, units, houses and other accommodations. Over a month ago, at the start of people being forced out of their own home neighborhood due to the wildfires, the city and county did loosen up the rules for temporary vacation rentals here. But I think that no one took advantage of that. And so they have again re-imposed all the requirements that came with the new ordinance on restrictions of temporary vacation rentals. So only the state program is in place in terms of housing on this island to accommodate Maui wildfire survivors. A couple of things that just came in during any point in time over the last month, which is harder for me to get a response from. So if you have questions, I'd suggest ask them now. Because if I get them later, you all know that many times I can't even get a response in a month from other departments. So if I get them like right before a meeting, it's highly unlikely I'm going to be able to get any response from anyone. And it's the team that Judy Ann works with, it's not me. Although I did go and just try to dig up information on some of this stuff. So DFM has not provided any updates. So all we know about the grate at Lane N at 377 portlock is that it's in dire need of repair and that the repair order is in, they received it, and it's just in the list of, I guess, as they get to repairs. So hopefully we'll hear some more updates soon. From the Director of the Department of Parks and Rec, I asked her about the automatic gate, the solar gate lock. And she told me they finally got the funds released from the Oahu Visitors Bureau. She said, I don't know why it took so long. She called HTA. I know there's a lot going on at HTA, so their procurement and everything else may have taken longer because of the turmoil there. But they, they have those funds. And so now DPR is ordering the lock and will install as soon as they receive it. But this lock is coming from the main. So she didn't give me an ETA on the arrival of the lock. But that's progress. So that's good news. And then there were a number of emails that came from Ray Sukiyama regarding wildfires, Cocoa Head Shooting Range, you know, is the city taking the situation seriously? And so they're, they're working on a longer response to those email inquiries. I guess Mr. Sukiyama finally asked me, like, is someone going to respond? And so I got the mayor's office to tell them they're working on a response. But generally, again, what DPR is one of the departments that is managing that area and is working on, they're doing an assessment of their unmaintained lands. So future park area or fringe hillside areas that are not in active recreation use. And they'll be working with HFD on their priority actions and what they may be able to do to better maintain those sites. They're also considering working on their adopted park agreements for some kind of ongoing maintenance support outside of what they're able to get done to try to do more towards larger fire breaks and protecting our special place that obviously our people. So that's all I have. Sorry if that's long. Oh, there was another question. That was a, I just received about the siren systems and how are they utilized? What's the difference? What's the testing? So that siren system is a state system. It is run by Ha'ima, not the city, county of Honolulu. But on their, you know, their actual plan, those sirens that we all hear, they're tested on the first workday of every month at 11:45 a.m. They can be used for imminent civil danger. Wait a second. Let me get the right, the right. Right information. Okay. The statewide all hazard outdoor warning system for public safety can be used for tsunamis, distant and local, hurricanes, evacuations for lava, brush fires, dam breaks and/or terrorist enemy attacks. There are over 400 sirens across the state, not including military and private sirens. So there are other elements of the integrated public alert and warning system. It's a federal program that includes, you know, the public broadcasting, you'll hear those alerts just testing up the public broadcasting system, the wireless emergency alert system and the live audio broadcast system outside of our sirens. And my understanding, siren goes off and then we're supposed to go listen to the radio, the TV, check your phone, et cetera, because that will tell you if it isn't the first workday of a month at 11:45 a.m., why the siren went off and what you need to be aware of. And. And you can also sign. Wireless. Honolulu Emergency App. I can, I can drop that, the, online. But I have that app on my phone. That's helpful. Hope that's helpful.
Thank you very much, Amy, for your comprehensive report. Questions for the mayor's representative, starting with Paige?
Thank you, Amy. Yeah, unfortunately, well, you did sort of not answer my question about the emergency sirens. So you guys just updated, or all the emergency sirens were just updated. I know a lot of money was spent putting siren towers all over the place.
But that's the state. I work for the state.
The state, okay. So who do I need to ask about that? Okay, I'll wait till you come up.
Yep.
Any other question for the mayor's representative? Anybody online? Okay, thank you very much, Amy, for joining us tonight. Okay, next is City Council Chair Tommy Waters's office. Amanda?
Hello again, everyone. Good evening. Amanda Zepeda here for Council Chair Waters's office. We distributed our newsletter to the board last week, trying to get it to you sooner as requested last month. We also sent a hard copy to Member Alton's home address, so we hope you receive that in time as well. This will be our last reminder for anybody to apply for the real property tax home exemption and/or the tax credit available. October 2nd is a deadline, a very hard deadline, and so we've been repeating this month after month now for some time, because it is such a hard deadline. Once it passes, there's really nothing that can be done to help you get that exemption or that tax credit until the following year. So please take advantage of that if, if you are eligible. I did want to provide an update on the 7078 Camilo Street overgrowth. Most of you know, I think, that Department of Facility Maintenance completed clearing of the sidewalk portion where the, where the trees and weeds were overgrown for such a long time. So we're super appreciative to them. The original estimated cost for the work was $1,000, and the final cost incurred is $576.64, which was billed to the owner by Department of Budget and Fiscal Services. So now we have two issues, right? We have the sidewalk overgrowth issue, which has been addressed finally. And now we still have the remaining issue of the private property overgrowth, which is a much more difficult issue to address. While the city has issued a violation, and there is a lien on the property issued in 2018, in fact, there are fines still accruing on that violation until it's corrected. So basically, until the lot is cleared of that overgrowth, the fines will continue to accrue. And we are deeply concerned that the, the fines have actually accrued to over $1.3 million at this point, from 2018 until this point and counting. You know, I heard that some of the neighbors were saying that this property has been vacant for over 40 years, despite the fact that it has a home exemption. So our office has been trying to do some digging into finding out what's happening here at this home, and how can we help? We did request an HPD welfare check, because there was some debate about whether there was anybody on the property or not. HPD did contact and make contact with the property owner, and she confirmed that she does not live on the property at this time. HPD related to me that she wanted to contact our office to talk a little bit more about the challenges that she's had with the property. She has not contacted us yet, but I do hope she does. In the meantime, Chair Waters sent a letter to her just yesterday, just basically sharing with her the concerns that the community has had about the, you know, fire hazards for the property and, and the, the safety concern, of course, for the surrounding properties as well. And just offering more assistance if, if she'd like. You know, we'd be happy to try to put together a volunteer team of folks who would be willing to go in and help try to clear up the, the property. We don't know what the issue is and why it hasn't been taken care of, but there's obviously something happening and some reason why she hasn't done it. So we're trying to find out more, but that's kind of where we are right now with that. And so as more information becomes available, we'll be happy to share it. One more thing is that I did contact Department of Budget and Fiscal Services about the home exemption, just to see if they had any notes in their records about whether or not someone does live there. A lot of times they have that type of information, and so they are conducting an investigation of their own to see if that home exemption should be removed or not. So I'll report back on that as well. Okay, next is the, I know we have some outstanding questions on the Cocoa Crater Stables repairs. We did submit a formal request to Department of Design and Construction to provide a representative to the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board at a very, a future meeting. I actually requested it for this meeting and didn't get a response. So hopefully we can get somebody to your meeting in person for, for next month. So we'll get back to you on that as well. For Cocoa Head District Park Automatic Gate, I know Director Assebi mentioned that the funds were released and that DPR has ordered the locking mechanism from the main man. Just wanted to share as well that the specific product that they're going to be installing is called a Max Super Arm, excuse me, Max Super Arm 2300. And I did receive some additional, like, product details and a guide on, you know, kind of how it, how it works and how it operates. If anyone is interested in that, I'd be happy to send over that information. But again, it's a Max Super Arm 2300. And, and that's all for me. If, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them or take them back for next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Are there questions for Amanda at this time? No questions, Amanda. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, Governor Josh Green's representative, Mike Buck. Hello, Mike.
Hello, everybody. For the, to be brief, let me tell you a couple of things that have been going on and some information that I carried back to the governor's office from last month. We've been, me personally, I've been on Maui 14 out of the last 18 days on day trips and some overnight trips. We've been operating what's called a JIC, which is a Joint Information Center. And it has taken all hands on deck for the last couple of months from the state to all the work there. We have now shut down the JIC that I was running in Diamond Crater, and we're now over on Maui with our own. So most of our PIOs and officials will be back here. There is a main concern, and I wish I had had enough copies. I passed out the, this month's state letter, and I'm going to ask you to go online and get it where you can read it. Or maybe if everybody that got a copy doesn't want one, they could pass it along. On the back page, it simply shows the approved ways to do things. There's a tremendous amount of just plain fraud going on that the state wants to bring to your attention with regard to donations, particularly financial. When you're a group and accepting solicitation from somebody that's going to do this or do that, think twice about it, take a good look at it. There have been an awful lot of cameras, including a couple of politicians, that have put money into their campaign fund. Or, you know, relief for somebody. In particular, they're super, super pleased to show at the JIC level that I've been at is the, the massive amount cocoa being shown by all of us, meaning everybody non-Maui. Until you've been there, you have no idea how devastating it is. It's, you can't walk down Front Street without crying. I mean, just a real shame. So we want to make sure that you go ahead and refer to that as the backside, as that list. We've also been very busy with this PIO fair, and that is Public Information Office, like I am, on getting everybody on deck with everybody else's stuff. It takes an awful lot of time, and it's coming thankfully to an end. We want to make sure that when, when we bring forth a question from you, that it gets handled by you. So once again, I want you to use, if you don't mind, my personal email, because it's a lot easier to remember. MikeBuckHawaii@gmail.com. And any questions that I get, I will be back even the next month. Now, we did have three things. I don't know if some of you know, I want to be as quick as I can. We, we have three things that you need to know. First of all, I also do the, this function for the Wai Kehala Neighborhood Board. It meets on the, on Thursdays. And last, last time they met, it brought up the same concerns that we have here, particularly with some of the homeless. You all were talking about what can be done about the park at Honolulu Bay. The same thing is happening, right? Right in Kahala, right in front of the mall. I mean, it's, it's a racket that's going on there. And our problem is, I hate to say this, because I know they're a good-intentioned group, but some of the enforcement that's been brought up earlier tonight, they just said, well, you can't do this, and you can't do that. The ACLU has been sending people to be there and tell these people how to speak, and tell them when to go to this and go to that. It is, it's pretty harrowing, particularly for, you know, kids and family that are just not going to walk around in that area anymore. And it's the same people, and I, I really agree with, with what Paige said and some others, I think Greg too. Closing the parks is not the answer. They're just going to end up somewhere else. What they need to be done is tough love. And until that, until we demand that to happen, it's not going to happen. I get the cops thing of it, we get calls every day. And one more fast one. When you need something about unemployment, or a gap in your employment, or when somebody said earlier that the, they've shut down some of the B and Bs that they weren't going to be able to do here, nobody wants it. There's only like three people came from Maui to take advantage of that. So it's going back to, but what they really need is money. And that group, once again, is on the back of the newsletter. Be very, very careful and make sure you know where your money is being spent. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have. Paige?
Thank you, Mike, for your report and questions. Elizabeth and Paige?
You had mentioned about the ACLU. Have residents anywhere that you know of taken the ACLU to court? Because they are infringing upon our rights, and just kind of curious, sorry, everybody.
No, no, you know what?
Just kind of curious about why that hasn't happened. Why haven't they been challenged?
It's good to, it's good to do that, because they have been supported by half, half of people. And now that, that support is waning and dwindening. They're running out of money. So now what they have to do is be, be present to someone, to show people that do contribute, that they're contributing. And listen, they're a well-intended group, but, but what they do has consequences. You know, I could just tell you a little bit, something personal. For many, many years, the lead attorney there was a retired judge named Dan Foley, who's my first cousin. And we have diametrically opposed politics and everything else. But one thing he did agree about later is, he left the ACLU, and the ACLU started worrying about getting money instead of getting a job. They are a force to be reckoned with, very, very difficult. Somebody was talking about sticking a pole in the, in the, in the water and being a fisherman. That, that group has grown, I think it was Greg, you said, from three to about 30. And it's getting, it's, it's more than that. It's an awful lot.
So my second question was, I've heard $10 million coming in for the Maui Relief Fund, and I don't want to mention the well-known organizations that are receiving these millions of dollars. Is our Attorney General or somebody at the state level going to monitor this, even though they're well-established nonprofits?
Yeah, you're right. What's happened with, and this is the, the Rock and Oprah's, 10 million each. That barks a lot of money. But unfortunately, there are some that are concerned, including the administration, that it's going to be spent on other things than where the money is supposed to go. In any case, it's going to run out when their money runs out. You know, and how, how fast can you go through 20 million real fast? And the biggest complaint people have, I spent all my days in my office, is they're, they're so frustrating that it takes, they know the money's there, they read about it, they see about it, they can go get it. And taking that next step, and they're worried about fraud. So that's the other, the other part of that.
No, I agree with you, but it's just that money is sitting there now. So isn't there something that the state can do as far as setting precedents now for transparency?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And these, I'm talking about some well-established reputable nonprofits.
There are, there is one.
That have, you know, $100 million, $10 million. Recently, another one that just came from the mainland for the Maui Fund. And I'm just wondering how much of that is going to get towards building the homes for the people.
You've got to be really creative about looking at the list of vetted, you know, charitable organizations, particularly the ones, if you say this is to be used for feeding people, it can't be used for rent, for gasoline, or a shelter. And there's a, you know, nonprofits are a great place to have a job. You know, it's a six-figure gig. Where's that money come from? It comes from. Paige?
So back to the siren system. So.
Good, yes.
The state spent a lot of money upgrading all these.
140 mil.
Yes, putting in a lot of sirens, new sirens in new places, all over the place. My understanding is that these sirens, as Amy talked about, was that they're used for all different kinds of things. However, the mindset, and I can tell you of every single person that I've spoken to, and there have been quite a few, is that if they hear that siren, they're heading for the hills.
Yeah.
So.
However, you're, you're.
Let me finish. Let me finish. So that is factual. Every time I talk to somebody, I say, you know those sirens that you hear every month? What would you do if you heard one? They said, I'd head up the hill.
Right.
I'd head inland. So if these sirens have one siren for fire, and one siren for tsunami, and one siren for hurricane, and one siren for terrorist, and how, how do we know that?
Okay, let me tell you, there's a task force that's been set up. I thought you were finished.
No.
Is this three questions, two or five?
No, this is one question.
Okay.
So we have this siren that does four or five different sirens. But one, everybody that I spoke to, nobody knew that. And two, nobody knows the difference between any of these sirens. So my question is, is the state spent all this money on these new sirens, but they've never educated the public on, on these sirens, when, where, how, what they each sound like, et cetera? So is that something that in light of the recent tragedies they're going to address?
Absolutely. Okay. And the, the way they're doing this is unfortunately, there's going to be a lot of accusations going on about what did or didn't happen with the sirens, particularly around Haina. And Paige is right, but the lame excuse they used was, oh, yeah, the sirens make everybody go Malka. Well, if you have an educational campaign, and that's what they need to do, they're going to now say, there are several different things that make sirens free. You're, 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 as soon as you hear a siren, you have to go to social media, you have to go to radio, you have to go to television. Don't rely on anybody to come and knock on your door and, and help you out. It's going to be a $340,000 study that's going on right now, is how to quickly come up with public service announcements. The Hawaii Broadcasting Association and others have already donated hundreds of thousands of dollars of airtime that they will be willing to spend as soon as these can be done. So what Paige was saying was right. It's going to be, is they're going to, since they made this big investment. And when they do that, that test, which is at 11:45 on, you know, the first Monday of the month, now, as soon as you hear a siren, you know that I'm in danger, assume it, and then make the calls that you need, you need to call. And I think it'll be a pretty good kickoff if the Hawaii Association of Broadcasters, which is already on TV, do these video, and, and they're being produced as we speak, sooner rather than later. And I think that that's going to come up probably not before the next session, but they're going to assume it, and they're going to start doing it.
And along those lines, I also want to tell you that the majority of the people. And along those lines, I also want to tell you that the majority of the people that I spoke with were over the age of 70. And they don't have apps on their phones. My mom is not going to pick up her phone and decide to punch into an app and to go to this app. She's going to get the hell out of Dodge.
Yeah.
So I would really, really appreciate if these educational seminars, or whatever it is the state's planning to do to educate people about these sirens, that they take into consideration that you're dealing with an elderly population that isn't going to grab their phone or go to the computer, that they're going to actually get the hell out of Dodge.
Yeah, and that's fun.
And that's really important because.
I think all of us that have those kapuna you're talking about have a responsibility too, you know, to get onto this.
Yes, but a lot of the people I spoke to don't live with somebody.
Yeah.
If you're sitting in your home at 11:45 or at midnight, you're sleeping, and there's nobody in your house with you, you're not going to sit there and decide to grab your phone to look at an app or go to the computer. They might just grab a bag and leave the house. So I'm just asking that the kapuna really be taken into consideration with these decisions.
I think they're to be, as reported by the average aides of those who died, particularly in Lahaina, a lot of those folks just, they hear the siren, they just go ho-hum, or they close the door and they shut the windows.
And by the way, they also had no cell service. They also had no cell service, a lot of those people. So to say that, you know, it's a three-pronged thing, hear the siren, when you grab your phone, you look at an app, you can't say that. Those people in Maui did not even have cell service. So they're not going to sit there and turn on the television. There was no time for any of that. So the siren system really needs to be looked at.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Thank you.
The board that is doing this is looking at providing those that don't have an AM radio, an AM radio, as if you hear a siren, turn this on. And they're doing, they're doing more than monthly tests in all the AM radio stations, and mostly AM, because it has a stronger signal, lousy quality, but longer signal. I know because I've been in it for 60 years. But that is a real, it's a good point. I mean, you can't assume that anybody's got an app, certainly. You know, my kapuna, I don't know what an app is. So, but they do know if they hear a siren, and they have a radio, and the radio can be supplied by them if they don't have one. Let's take up a collection, you know, a $5 radio and a bunch of batteries, make sure that everybody's informing. The key for all of this stuff is just getting out in front of it by saying, all right, now a siren means we have a problem. What is the nature of the problem? Not necessarily to rush Malka or rush Makai, but find out what's going on, but get out.
Thank you very much, Mike, for your report. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I did have one thing, but I didn't want to steal a board's thunder. I'll stick around.
Okay, sure.
We have a little announcement to make too.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Moving on, Senator Stanley Chang's office. Is there a representative online or?
Yeah, she sent me an email, so I have the link on the minutes.
All right, no representative present, but we do have information submitted. Senator Chris Lee, are you still with us?
Oh, still here, everybody.
Hi, go ahead.
Thanks. I want to follow up on a couple of things, starting, as I mentioned, I think in the earlier part, I have an outreach with D L N R coming up on the vendor issue, based on the letter from, I think it was last month, that the board had sent. So I'll follow up with that probably in about a week and a half, I think it is, roughly. And then, and that's asking D L N R just to not do food vending and commercial activities and that sort of thing in the area. The other big thing that's going on, obviously with the Maui stuff, and we started doing a quick assessment of the budget. The Council on Revenues, which is the group of economists which the state relies on for setting budgets and things like that, recently downgraded our economic outlook, which means money's going to be tight again, unfortunately. That's due to, you know, obviously lost tourism in Maui and the state of things. That said, on top of that, obviously, a lot of resources are going to have to go to Maui, to rebuilding schools and roads and, you know, all the things, plus all the social services and everything else that are kind of exploding right now. So we're assuming an even tighter budget than just a simple economic downgrade. So there's going to be another update on the budget situation we'll have from the Council on Revenues before the legislative session really gets going. So at that point, we'll have a better idea, but that's going to affect things like projects and money for schools and all the stuff here on Oahu and around the rest of the state. So I just want to put that out there, so everybody's kind of at least aware of what's, what the outlook is right now, and to sort of temper expectations for the future. And then just a couple of updates on stuff that I've been reached out about, reached out to about. There are a couple of traffic or transportation related things. One, for the EV charging, which I'd mentioned maybe like six months ago or something last, but there's a bunch of chargers that the state's working with the county and private partners and deploying everywhere. Hawaii was actually the first state out of all 50 in the country to get the federal money and implement. It's called NEVI funds. And that's going to put 32 new DC fast chargers in, up and down H1 and other places. And we'll have more to follow up with, with more detail later, since we're running short on time. The second thing is we changed the law this year, which is now in effect, for the folks who've been reaching out, saying their registration, they ought to go renew it at the council, or excuse me, at the county, but then they got to get a safety check and then go back to get their registration afterward, after getting a temporary registration. It's this whole kind of terrible process. So anyway, the law changed, so we basically made it easier, so you can get a safety check and a registration independent from one another, so you don't have to go back and forth and back and forth, which should save everyone a lot of time and headaches standing in lines. And then lastly, we talked a lot about traffic safety and particular safe routes to schools. I know we're bored, had a meeting recently. The bill that we constructed that passed this year, that was kind of my big priority, set aside state funding to implement a lot of those projects. And that's money that schools and community groups, even the neighborhood board, can come up with proposed projects to make it safer for kids to get to school. There's a timeline and sort of a pecking order, which will be basically first come, first served. The overseeing sort of advisory council that's going to select projects and push stuff forward is just getting going now. So if folks are interested, reach out to the city, reach out to the state, or even my office, and we can help connect folks. And the last thing was just a separate hat announcement. Just this summer, a couple of weeks ago, I got elected by our national peers to be the president of the National Caucus of Environmental Legislators, which is a group of about 1,500 Democrats and Republicans in all 50 states focused on environmental conservation and that sort of thing. So there may be a lot of opportunity to actually do more with some of the resource protection and other projects that we have here, that I think there's access to other places and resources and funders and that sort of thing now, which we can help bring down. So with that, let me wrap up and just say happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Senator. Any questions for Senator Lee? Yes, Paige?
Senator, hi, thank you so much for your report. Two things. First of all, what is a DC charger and why are they needed on the freeways? And second of all, Elizabeth did bring up a really good point. You were talking about how a lot of the state monies, federal monies are going to be diverted to rebuild Maui and rebuild the roads and the schools and et cetera, et cetera. So with Elizabeth's question regarding oversight of the nonprofits that are working on Maui, they've received hundreds of millions of dollars over there, literal cash. And if that money is not going to the roads, and it's supposed to be going to the people, how is that being watched over? And maybe that's a question again for Mike and for you and any other oversight committee within the state or the feds to see where exactly is all this money going? I mean, is somebody standing on a street corner handing out $50 bills to people? Or, I thought that money was supposed to be used for the rebuild and for, to help the people. I'm confused because there is so much money, literally the post office over there, or not the post office, but the, one of the Hawaii commissions is receiving 30,000 pieces of mail with checks and money in it every single week. 30,000 pieces of mail from all over the world. That's a lot of money. So I'm reiterating again the oversight on these nonprofits and where exactly all that money is going.
Yeah, let me take the second part first. You know, generally, I think some of the state and county agencies, in particular D C C A and a couple others on the state side that do that kind of usual oversight, or, you know, picking up fraudsters and scammers and that kind of thing, those folks are in the midst of dealing with all this right now. So I don't know that there's an outcome yet. The Senate and House both have either committees or hearings scheduled. We actually have one on Maui coming up to talk about a lot of this and insurance and all that sort of thing. So that sort of thing, as this is unfolding, people are on it. I don't know that there'll be specific answers as to who did what for a while yet, though. And then the second, or the first part of your question, DC fast chargers are basically super-fast electric vehicle chargers. Like, they look similar to most electric vehicle chargers, but they just do it at a much, much faster rate. So rather than waiting, you know, hours for your car, you can go from zero to a full tank in, you know, like half an hour, something like that. They're not on H1 specifically, they're in the H1, along the H1 corridor, so they'll be, you know, at a site, a block off the off-ramp or something like that.
Thank you.
Senator, first of all, congratulations, your point, it's really quite considerable. And then the other two things, please, along the lines of transparency and the large amounts of money that are being given on behalf of Maui, maybe when you guys get in session and you start talking about this, some of these larger reputable nonprofits that have received 10 million, et cetera, et cetera, they could share if it was restricted for housing, restricted for food, restricted for what? I mean, I think that'll trickle down to the people of Maui and maybe help in the current situation. But I was also going to ask if you guys are thinking, or would you think about what we could do at the state level for the individual homeowners that still have to pay for their house and/or their land, and they have no job, and they have no place to live? So, you know, can we look at something to help them be able to keep their land long enough to be able to have opportunity to rebuild? Because I don't think the insurance alone is going to be able to help most of these homeowners rebuild because of this huge gap of time before they can get back in there. So I know that's a lot, but wanted to share that and see if maybe you can noodle on it for next session.
Yeah, no, definitely appreciate that. I think the conversations we've been having on an ongoing basis, first of all, we've been getting updates. Obviously, the governor has made clear that that kind of scamming and fraudulent money laundering and all that stuff is not to be tolerated. And also, the Attorney General also has been leading a whole deep dive into all of that. So I think we're kind of excited to see where the gaps in the system, I guess, as it were, are so we can fix it. And there have been conversations already about focusing specifically, to your point, on some of the housing situations and all of that. And I know the governor, through the executive, excuse me, the emergency order, has some powers and they can do that stuff, whatever else is needed legislatively, either for this moment or to create, you know, opportunities to review these things for future events as well. I think that's definitely in the works.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, Byron, go ahead.
One more question. So on the charging stations, will there be fees assessed? Will that be free to the people charging?
It depends on where. Maybe what I'll do is for the next meeting, or maybe I can send it to the chair and distribute accordingly, but we can get sort of the map and details for where those are going to be and what it's expected to cost and that sort of thing. Generally speaking, not just these charging stations, but there's, you know, a ton more going in besides just these 32. But generally, it's more expensive at a public charger than it is, you know, at your own home if you have that opportunity. But still about half the price compared to a gallon of gas.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Lee, for joining us. We're going to be moving on to Representative Jean Ward. Welcome.
Lord Chair and members, thank you for your service. And congratulations, Senator Lee, on your election as a national officer. And almost congratulations for Stacy. It'll work out. We had a great meeting last Thursday at Koko Head Elementary. Community came together, said, hey, what are your priorities? We listened to them, what are your priorities? And like other communities, everybody's concerned about cost of living, homelessness, and crime. And I think housing is built within that same particular situation. And if you're interested, we're going to be out in Kapalee at Apple Beach on this Thursday. Then we're going to be going to Maui, Kauai, and the Big Island. The Maui one is still a bit sensitive, and we're still paying attention, but it's where, we want to listen to what the community has to say because there's a little bit of a out-of-touch kind of low approval rating of the legislature. You know what the last survey said? The approval of the legislature? 18%. Maybe the Congress is a little bit lower. It was very humbling to learn that. So on page one, you can see that we have a number of things coming up. The other listening tour, I want to give a shout out to Kamameh Schools that has been meeting with a lot of stakeholders. And we had one recently just next door at James. And I think a great idea came up in that we need a CROCK Center, a community center in boycott. Everybody kind of got behind that and said, you know, that's probably a great idea. Elijah, you were there. Was it on your table also that you had that same discussion? And they said, well, maybe James, when their lease expires, we could do it there. But it's one thing that I think started a nice discussion, and it's good that Kamameh Schools is reaching out. The issue with the farmers, that's still a little bit of a sore point. There's some funds and fines that are still not resolved, or increasing their leases or expanding them. And on the inside, you can see that there's obviously total identification with the farmers. Ninety-four percent say, hey, keep the farmers on the land, but yet in a matter of less than two years, they will have lost their lease. And the vision of having a, how would you call it, a breadbasket, as per Henry Kaiser, will have disappeared. Now, they haven't made a decision, but they're not actually showing, they're not showing their hand, let's put it that way. So the input of the board and other members is greatly welcome. Before I leave page one, I want to bring your attention to, we have a special guest at our beer summit, the Hawaii Kai Leadership Forum. This is the representative from the town that burned down in 17 minutes. And that's the good representative of, it's Cochran, Ellie Cochran is going to be speaking. And there's a change of venue. We're not at the Marina, we're going to be at the Oahu Club. The Oahu Club will be a nice venue for a good meeting with parking, et cetera. Moving into the page three up at the top, I can remember when Charles Jew was here, Charles the Jew would always give his first chicken report. This is where, kind of near the Great Lawn, the chickens and all the feral chickens. Well, look what the city and county has got. I don't see this applebee here, but it's where for $50 per week, you can get your chickens rounded up and then pay $10 for a disposal fee. I was going to ask if any of you participated in that, or I was going to ask the city if anybody has actually taken them up on that, because I'm not sure that people are interested to pay $50 a week to round up chickens. It's, anyways, I thought that was a noteworthy announcement. Regarding the Maui fires, everybody's got a lens that we are now looking through, and Kamameh Schools is very attuned to what is going on in front of the post office. My office is in touch with them regarding what's going on in Mariners Ridge. There's a lot of conservation land that is dry and very volatile. So we are taking a survey, and I encourage all of you to take that survey. We're going to be making a fire hazards inventory, what Hawaii We're gonna be making a fire hazards inventory, what Hawaii Kai looks like, where are the hazardous areas, where are they supposedly safe. So even if your neighborhood is safe, just say so, so you will not be categorized otherwise. Police know there are four investigations going on in Maui. You know, the FEMA investigation started from day one, and from week one, the governor put the attorney general as a investigation source. Also, the US Congress has an investigation that they are doing. The report will be coming out. And we in this House have six working groups, of which we are going to be reporting for facts as well as new legislation. I'm on the business and employee working group. We just had a briefing by DED and HTA, as well as the hero, Professor Harold Bonham. The bottom line of what the professor said about projected in terms of the economy, it's both optimistic as well as pessimistic. It looks as though in four years, everything will have turned around. But it's gonna take a slow two years plus to get people housed again. And I find that a little bit, I find it a little bit slow. I challenged him, I assure you it's gonna be that slow because, you know, government moves slowly. But I think we have to do what we did with Iniki in nineteen ninety-two. We basically got all the resources to them quickly without bureaucracy. They did pop-up permitting. You know what the average to get a permit in the city and county of Honolulu? How many hundreds can you count to? Doubt days. But a pop-up permitting agency that they did in, in Kauai for Hurricane Iniki was they expedited, literally expedited, so you could do it within weeks. But otherwise, it's been taking months, almost embarrassingly, years in the city and county of Honolulu. So there's a lot of creative things that can be done. But as your representative, I commit to you, as I've done publicly so many places, that we will rebuild Maui. Maui will be rebuilt. And the resounding theme is always according to Maui's specifications. In the meeting that we had with the briefing with Jimmy Tokioke and DED, every default has been, well, it depends on what the people of Maui want. Depends on what the surveys of these communities are saying. So police know that the legislature will be fully there. There's probably gonna be, as I think a good senator said, a lot of funds are gonna be probably moved in the direction for rebuilding of Maui. But it's gonna be not a, well, we're gonna equivocate, we're gonna nickel and dime that. I don't, do not see that at all. The whole world is actually pouring themselves into Maui. But we've gotta manage it well. And one of the things that I did ask yesterday that they didn't actually answer very well, who's gonna coordinate, know the left hand and the right hand of what's going on? Because if you see how the response was, people didn't know what the other person was doing or coordinating it. And some of it was obviously a lack of communication. But we've gotta do it, we've gotta do it right, and we gotta do it quick. Because some of this is, is, I mean, like we've got a ninety-day mortgage holiday. You don't have a job, you don't have a business, we're gonna give you ninety days. Are you gonna be happy with that? I mean, come on. That, that's such a token. And I think those are things that we're gonna have to examine to be very realistic about. Look, the people in Maui are hurting, they want stuff quick, and they want it efficiently. And right now, they're considering, government, you've been slow, you've been inefficient, and you're not doing enough. All of us in leadership, including this board, will always be put to the test when things like this come up. Emergency sirens, I'm glad you guys talked about it. Hey, we can do a better job. And I'm glad that, Mike, you said that there's gonna be, hopefully, a, a white paper on all the confusion. I mean, I mean, of all the things to have people die for because they couldn't hear what the siren was or what it meant, was unfortunately ridiculous. At the bottom of page three, I want you to know that I sit in Mike Buck's chair at five o'clock, and I do Let's Debate It this, this Friday. I'm gonna be talking to my Perry and Price counterpart, Representative Diamond Garcia. He's going to Maui tomorrow to do the huge town hall meeting. If you ever want to see ventilation, you're gonna see it tomorrow. And I think it's actually being livestream, in case you want to tune in. But it's the big Maui, Maui is gonna speak loud and clear tomorrow. And Diamond Garcia, I'm going to interview him on Saturday. The last thing I wanna note is that the town hall meeting we had on speeding and safety, safe streets in Hawaii Kai, Mr. Morton of the City and County DTS, as well as Mr. DOT, good friend, his name is Sniffin', they're committed to slow down, redirect traffic, and particularly starting with Hawaii Kai Drive as it goes up next to Kamiloiki School. That is just a real, real hazard. So we're gonna do a lot of road calming and other things which, five or ten years ago, you couldn't even get a, a speed bump or something where people almost were killed. And still to this day, for those of you, Greg, you live in Kalama Valley, there's not one crosswalk in Kalama Valley, even for the, where the kids are at the park. Or where people run into the wall or Hawaii Kai Drive meets Kialaho. So they're gonna be taking some action. I will report it to you, Madam Chair. That, I think, is all I have to say, other than the homeless on, on Honolulu Bay. I have a good friend in Do'Ker, who's, who's the first one who got those twenty-four-hour Fisherman Caucus people out of there. I've called him again because constituents were really upset that they're back and were getting numerous. He said he will be working on that. Hopefully, within the next few days, they will be gone. If not, I will stay on it because it's, it's just a continual problem. And let's face it, homelessness is a mutation of society heretofore as we knew it, as we know it. We're still struggling with how to deal with it. We don't have a handle on it. But we've gotta resolve it. I mean, we're Americans. We, we're not gonna turn into a food war country. I'm sure that's right. And, oh, sorry, the, 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 the most important announcement, we kept Mike Buck here, is a couple of things are going on. He's gonna be the emcee at Sam's Celebration of Life. We're pending between the Oahu Club and some other area in, hopefully, not too far from there, November four or eleven. Sam passed away when? May thirty-first or something? So you can see this is being fine-tuned and discussed in detail with his good son Spencer. But also, in fact, it was announced at the, at the listening tour at Cocoa Head last Thursday, there is a Sam Sloan Memorial Scholarship Fund at Hillsdale College. Sam was a big proponent of Hillsdale College. And Liz Moore, constituent up in Mariners Ridge, has kicked that off, has made a big donation. And that will be something that she may be soliciting to the community for. Otherwise, we're gonna have kosher hot dogs and Pepsi. That's in his will, believe it or not. That's what Sam Sloan said in his will. So hot dogs and Pepsi. And I think, anything else, Mike, you wanna mention? You're the, he's the emcee, so you know it's gonna be a good agenda. They will keep moving with a bit of humor. Yes, we, we are hoping to have not only the elected officials there in numbers, but also people who may be able to make it, can send a word, even the governor's office, or the mayor, et cetera. He was, he was greatly loved, Sam Sloan. So we will keep you posted, but it's, it's finally gonna come to pass that the Lone Ranger will ride off into the sunset, properly honored, where honors do.
Thank you very much, Representative Ward. Are there any other questions? Yes. Elizabeth, and then Herb.
Um, when you were talking about the ninety-day
Mortgage holiday?
Yeah, I kinda made a phase. And what I wanted to clarify is that I think it's great, but it'd be nice to know what is next. It, it shouldn't just stop there. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We, we haven't thought through to the end. In fact, we're waiting for a lot of facts of, you know, why did some things happen? Why didn't some other things happen? What we can learn from Iniki, what we can learn from the prairie fires on the mainland. The point is, there's, there's a big job ahead. And I think, Mike, as he's been, like everybody else in this administration, has got their eyes focused, laser fixed on rebuilding of Maui. Maui is one-third of our tourism economy, by the way. It's very, very important.
Herb, go ahead.
Herb, online.
Hi. You brought up the Celebration of Life. I got a call or a message today from Peggy Regentine.
Yes.
And she wanted me to look to see if Mariners Cove was an option. I haven't replied to her, but, you know, just thought I'd bring it up, whoever's organizing it. But they need somebody from the area. And I know we got two online here, at least, that might have the connections to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Herb, because Peggy is, I think, the lead person. So you're talking to the right individual. I think it's between that suggestion, the golf course, and the Oahu Club. I think those are the three, either November four or eleven, at eleven o'clock to
In, in the message, she says the Oahu Club setup, I'm not sure about it. I think I've been there once. But the golf course is like, I don't know, twelve thousand dollars, and that's out the window. So she's, she's, I think she thinks I'm with Mariners Cove. So I was gonna talk to Elijah and/or
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth about that. Maybe put them in contact with Peggy.
Yes. Good, good suggestion, Herb. In fact, how many people will Mariners Cove hold? Elijah, Elizabeth, you've had fifty, I know, can you, some, just recently, Mike Buck said there's probably gonna be two hundred people coming. I'm thinking, well, we're planning a hundred if it was at Oahu Club, but standing room?
I would think you'd have to be indoor/outdoor. There's, there's no way two hundred people can fit in that room.
So there's a
We're just there for that Firewise meeting.
Oh, yeah. And by the way, thank you for bringing that Firewise
So that was like, you know, you, you can see that fifty people aren't gonna, I mean, two hundred people won't fit in that room. We had a meeting there decades ago with Kamamea Schools, and we had over two hundred people show up. And they were inside crammed, and they were outside, all over, trying to listen in. You, you can't fit two hundred people in there. You'd have to put a tent on the outside if you can. I don't, um, yeah.
Herb, you've heard that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just FYI. The point is, there will be a Celebration of Life of Senator Sam Sloan, pending further decisions.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're gonna be moving on. Is there someone from Representative Mark Hashem's office online, or? Not here. Anybody from our congressional representatives, congressional offices? No one? All right. We're gonna be moving on to Board Business. The first item, update on the Cocoa Head Shooting Range. I think we got quite an extensive update from the mayor's representative. So this was covered earlier in the meeting. I'm going to ask our member, Kim Hollinsworth, to give us an update on Cocoa Crater Stables. Kim, you still online?
Yes, I'm here. I don't know anything.
Okay, so you haven't heard anything about any release of funds, or, do you know what department is going to be managing the funds?
No, like I said, I don't know anything.
Okay. I know that you're still working very hard on, on your own at, at the site, trying to improve things. So thank you for that. Okay, moving on. I did not receive a recent update on the Kaibico Scenic Byway. We did discuss the issue of the name change tonight, and I will be following through on that in the next few days. Do we have an update on the Kamilu Nui Valley agriculture? The last we had heard was that Kamamea Schools is conducting interviews with all of their tenants. But I have not heard anything further. For everyone's information, Kamamea Schools is planning to return to our October meeting to provide an update. So we're looking forward to that. Elizabeth, do you have anything to share?
I was just gonna say the same thing, that I went to one of their meeting, the, the last meeting, and they indicated that they were coming back to the Neighborhood Board, potentially in October. And that, at that meeting, they had indicated that there was, that they thought that they were gonna be giving word to the farmers before the end of year. That's what I think I heard. I covered.
But no decision on terms of any, on the leases? Okay. All right. We've also heard an update on the solar lock from the mayor's representative. The money has been released. The lock has been ordered. It is coming from the mainland, so we have no idea on the timeline for that, but progress is being made. The next item is considering whether or not the board would like to establish a Neighborhood Board webpage. And this has come up because we have a board member who would volunteer to do this for us. So Elijah, I'd like to ask you to speak to this issue.
Um, at one of the Kamamea Schools meetings, people in the community were talking about a way to know about events in the community. And so things like volunteering at the wetland or at the Kiwi Coast, or even events that Hawaii Kai Town Center might host, and just knowing things to, to get involved or just to attend, and a way to centralize that. I don't think that there is that necessarily for Hawaii Kai specifically, or even for Oahu or Honolulu in general. And that the Neighborhood Board might be a good place to facilitate that, and just have that resource for people, either as a Google Calendar or as a website with just events listed that would be updated semi-regularly.
Is this something that the, the board would like to see happen? Would we like to maybe try it on a trial basis? And, yes, Elizabeth?
I think there are other boards that you have websites, and I think it's a, a great, great way to better serve the community. And maybe we could also have our agenda and then post it on it.
All right. You're right. There are other boards that do have their web, websites. They have a lot more social media communication than we do. Yes, Paige?
So Elijah would be in complete control of all the content? And at his discretion would be the content?
Yes. Go ahead, Elijah.
Um, I, I would just like ask, I guess at the board meeting, we could ask the community to just email things to me. And I would think pretty indiscriminately, things would just be put on unless it's something controversial, which I don't expect would happen. So if it's just an event that is open to the public, in Hawaii, hosted in Hawaii Kai, then it would just be added as an information.
So this isn't our website, it's the community's website?
Hosted by the Neighborhood Board, but it's not for only the Neighborhood Board, it's for the community that the Neighborhood Board serves.
So anything that the public sends to you, you're gonna post on our website?
Uh, uh, yes, assuming that it's, not, not an announcement, but an event that the public is invited to, assumably, for, in the community, for the community, whether it's volunteering or
Well, I have a suggestion, then maybe instead of a website, we do a Facebook page. And then that way, community members can post stuff, questions can be answered, we can post stuff.
I'm not sure we want people to just post things
Hugh just said that, he just said that he's gonna take stuff from the community and post it on the website.
Yes, but he is, if there's anything that looks controversial, I'm sure he'll bring it back to us for our input.
So what if there's an event, and we don't get to that event for a month because we haven't met for a month, and then that event's over, and it's something that we would have wanted posted?
Well, if it's an event and it's innocuous, and it's open to the public, there shouldn't be any reason why it shouldn't be posted.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Yes, Elsa?
I think it would be important to look at the other neighborhood websites and see how long they've been there. And in my experience with websites like that, it's very difficult to keep up, on the one hand. On the other hand, it can cause a lot of controversy. And on the third, third question is, are there any legal implications for the Neighborhood Board if it sponsors a website? I think it's, it might be a bit more difficult than it appears. But then certainly, if you wanna use social media, you could have announcements on Instagram or, you know, other options are there, too, to consider. If, if we are trying to create a platform for announcements, maybe that's a different way to think about.
Um, I think that hopefully one thing that will take out the controversy is not having like a public forum page. It's not like a Nextdoor page where anyone posts any responses to things. It's just informational. People take it as it is, but not like, you respond, this is great, this is not great, you know, not sparking a conversation about it necessarily, just as informational. I don't have any, I mean, assuming it's approved or, or if it's Um, I don't have any, I mean, assuming it's approved or, or if it's approved, I, I don't have any preference on what, uh, website it's on or how it's put out, but I would think that Instagram might be a little bit less accessible for this community in general, because it tends to be, um, a lot of seniors, um, who might not use that versus something like, you know, and a website would be fairly, I think, a simple website, just with like a page of a list of events, not necessarily like a whole lot of tabs and different things, and not like different forms to make it, but I don't know.
I, I think it's a great idea. Um, when I was looking for, um, community outreach projects for our money that we got, there was no website anywhere that had stuff that's going on in Hoi Kai. And if you didn't know about the holiday parade, you weren't looking up the holiday parade. If you didn't know about the boat parade, you weren't looking up the boat parade. So I think it's a fabulous idea. I just think that it's a huge responsibility for you to be making all the decisions on what the content is going to be. That's my only concern. Not that I don't trust you, I'm just saying that you making all those decisions is, could be problematic.
Would we like to try this on a trial basis?
Certainly, we are a neighborhood board, but, and Hoi Kai is pretty small, but all you got to do is look at all the social media that's out there, and every single one of them is embroiled in something, and what might start out as a simple, uh, postboard for information, that there's always, always someone out there looking to push their information to places where it shouldn't be. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Paige that, that, that is a big responsibility, and, and, um, I think we should go a little slower and perhaps make a prototype and see what it looks like, and, and write down simple procedures to say, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you arrive at the concurrence that these are, these are the proper events that can be posted? And do it, making the decisions fast enough so that it's not overcome by events.
Um, Herb has his hand up. Go ahead, Herb.
I'm all for it, Elijah. Thank you for jumping up and stepping up for this. Um, and I do trust you that if something controversial does come up, you will contact the chair, who will let us all know. Um, yeah, I mean, posting community events and meetings and, um, that kind of stuff is what I'm hearing, and that's a great idea. Thank you, Elijah.
Elizabeth, and then Kim?
I had made the assumption that, um, if someone came here and they wanted to announce something, it obviously is eligible to go on the website, so perhaps, independent, anybody who has stuff posted on the Facebook page or requests it from the community standpoint, a simple note to the chair, just saying, we're doing this, would you kindly post this, might qualify that, okay, yeah, we'll put this on our Facebook page. I'm just saying, so that it's not independent of this process, that at least whoever this organization is, is saying, would you please share this with the community? Uh, that's just a thought. It might increase the amount of emails Chair and Elijah gets, but at least it's coming here, and also going to get posted there and possibly mentioned during our announcements. What I kind of thought might happen.
Kim?
I was just going to second what Herb said. Uh, thank you, Elijah, for stepping up to the plate to do that. I think that if you look around in the auditorium where you all are, as well as online, and you see the dwindling numbers for the Neighborhood Board attendance, I think this is just another way that we can get more information out to our constituents in our neighborhood to get more people involved in our community, which I believe is what the Neighborhood Board is all about. I trust Elijah 1,000% to put up the right things, to monitor it and do it, and I thank you for stepping up to the plate.
Okay, um, do we want to, do we want to wait on making a decision and get more information and look at other Neighborhood Boards' websites? Or would we like to go ahead and have Elijah maybe do a trial and, um, a trial posting, let's say for six months or so, and let's see how it goes?
I think go ahead and do the trial posting while he's ready to do it. I think that sounds great.
I second that.
All right, uh, do you want to take a vote on this, or do we want to just, by consensus, give it a try? Paige, you have any objection? No? Chelsea, any objection to six-month trial?
As long as there's a start and stop dates, um, because you get an announcement that says there's a group of people over there that they're worried about those feral chickens, and they're going to have a seminar on how best to deal with it, and you're not sure which tack that they're going to take, and so how do you, how do you take that and, and put it on the announcement? Veracity of what it is that they're trying to do.
Greg?
And I guess just one other consideration, too. We have to be conscious of the sunshine law and not take positions on things that might come before the board. You mentioned feral chickens, what about feeding cats? We all remember how that almost tore us apart. So, yeah, it's, but I think it's a great idea, but I, yeah, to, to give it lots of thought and be conscious of all the, the different twists and turns.
Elsa?
I'm very new to this board, but I do worry about legal implications if you put something out in the public, like a website, and you choose, you put out the Hoi Kai Boat Parade, but you want to use something else for some reason. I mean, I, I really, I said I'm not experienced, but I just, I think, I don't know if that's the responsibility, or the Neighborhood Board has the authority to do that. No, I've not seen any websites of other Neighborhood Boards. It would be very helpful to see what they put, to follow what they change, and maybe get an idea of what, what is done in Oahu, or, you know, every state has different laws. So I don't know, if you could go to California and compare that to the...
Elijah?
I don't want to drag this out, but just a few things, um, I think, I mean, if people want to make community announcements here, we don't vet that, so I feel like it's the same kind of thing. I wouldn't like opine on my own, like, you really should go to this event. I mean, I think people submit as maybe information about it, it could be limited to that, so it's not like we're taking a position, and since the board is open to announcements like that, or presentations that are not necessarily vetted, um, it wouldn't, even if a seminar about feral cats is not necessarily saying that we endorse it, but just that it's there. Um, but also, I think if board members are wary about this, I could also do this on my own, without any board oversight, and I think I'm free to do that as a private citizen. And then if the board likes that, then they can endorse it.
All, all right, maybe that is a solution. Uh, we'll let Elijah go ahead and do his thing, and if you have any announcements that you would like the community to know about, you can email that to him, and he will post it. And Elijah, if you could bring back maybe, um, a screenshot of a page or two to our next meeting, that would give this board an idea of what is coming through, uh, to be posted online. Okay? Thanks very much for agreeing to be so proactive and providing much more communication and publicity. Okay, um, any board committee announcements? All right, we're moving on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes for August Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes? No suggested revisions, so the minutes are accepted as distributed. Are there any other board announcements? And I'm going to go into the closing announcements, and the next regular meeting of the Hoi Kai Neighborhood Board, remember, is Tuesday, October 24th, not Tuesday, October 31st, which is Halloween. So the meeting in October is going to be on October 24th. I, no, the Tuesday, the Tuesday before. No, no, we, we, okay, the next meeting in October is October 24th, 7:00 PM here at Ha'ione Elementary School and on WebEx. The Hoi Kai Neighborhood Board regular meetings are cable cast on Olelo, Channel 49, on the second Monday of the following month at 9:00 PM, and repeating on that month's third Friday at 7:00 AM. The videos can also be seen online at the Olelo webpage or the Neighborhood Commission Office webpage. I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. Meeting is officially adjourned.